All right. Benton County County Committee is now sectioned, voting for chair.
Tonight, our Director of Schools, Mark Florence, will give our invocation.
That's right. Dear gracious and undevlinly fatherless, thank you so much. We want this beautiful day. We thank you for our beautiful day. We thank you for these commissioners and all our citizens here tonight and just be with our commissioners as they make decisions that we hope will please into you and just guide them to make the right decision. Lord, we ask you to be with those in our community that have lost loved ones and those that are in fear. Give them the strength and the peace to get through these days. Lord, most importantly, we thank you for your sake, Jesus. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Commissioner Frank Lashley, will you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, Paul, please. Everyone who's here, please press present on your tablets. Stephen Stokes, therapy. We have a call on sixteen minutes. Next is the approval of the agenda. I need a motion and a second. We have a motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Milton. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? There are none, so the agenda is approved. Number two is the citizens' forum. And we did not have anybody sign up for the citizens' forum. So we'll go right on down to number three is the commissioners' forum. Do we have a commissioner that would like to speak right now?
Okay, then I have something to say now so that later, when we get to our resolutions, I do not have to step down from the chair. I'd just like to say something about the First Bank Building. You know, we hear this all the time. People are complaining about, "We never change. We never get anything new. We don't do anything." Well, when we do try to change something, it seems like we get a lot of opposition. But then we're hearing that we don't do anything. So, you know, it makes you wonder, do you want change or do you not? So, you know, of course we do. Well, the second part is the cost of First Bank versus remodeling the old electric system building. The old electric system building probably has not had a codes officer in there in a long time. So I feel like that if we ever start to remodel the building to move the mayor down there, which that's what I'm hearing from some of the commissioners, "Why don't you move him to the electric system building?" Well, by the time we get through with codes, that's gonna be probably a million dollars or more because we already know what happened at the old Sears building with codes. That's costing us a lot more money than what we had planned. So that's one thing I'd like for you to consider. And the next thing is like appearance. When we have people come into our town, I like for them to see something nice. You know, the electric system building, it was good for what it was over the years. And, you know, at one time it was nice, but it's not nice now. The appearance on the outside is not nice. So when we have people coming into our town, such as tomorrow, we have Congressman Mark Green that's going to be here. You know, I would like for people like that, Marsha Blackburn, even our governor, David Kustoff, people like that, or any of our higher up political people. When they come to town, I would like for them to drive up here and see that right there next door to our courthouse is a nice brick building, Benton County Annex, maybe Benton County Mayor's Office. And if they want to go in and sit down with the mayor or any of us, you know, there's gonna be a nice conference room there to talk to. That's what I want to be proud of. You know, I don't want to have to say, "Well, the mayor's office is, go down that way, turn by the bank, and it's that old building behind the bank again." You know, you don't want to say that. So that's how I feel about it. And that's just my opinion, so I wanted to voice that right now. So we'll move on. Has anybody else got anything they want to say? Okay, we'll move on to the mayor. Do you have anything right now?
No, please.
Okay. Mr. Milton?
No, ma'am.
Then number five is the approval of the minutes. I need a motion and a second. We have a motion by Commissioner Nunry and a second by Commissioner Arnold. All in favor of approving their minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Number six is the report of the public utilities. I need a motion. We have one by Commissioner Burke and a second by Commissioner Milton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Number seven, we're down to our resolutions. Resolution number one is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appoint Scott Summers as chairman of the Harbor Utility District Board for a term of two years. I have a motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Bain. Any discussion? Okay, there are none, so everyone please vote if you're in favor. Resolution two is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appoint David Aaron as Secretary Treasurer of the Harbor Utility District Board for a term of two years. We have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Murphy. Any discussion? There are none, so please vote.
Anyone with a change of vote? Motion carries with ten minutes.
Resolution three is a resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to budget funds in the amount of $425 received from miscellaneous refunds to a line item for the proper expenditure. Motion by Commissioner Bain and a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion? Okay, there are none, please vote.
Anyone with a change of vote? Motion carries with ten minutes.
Resolution four is a resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to abolish the administrative sergeant position and replace it with a lieutenant position. We have a motion by Commissioner Milton and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions for the sheriff? There are none, so everyone please vote.
Anyone with a change of vote? Motion carries with ten minutes.
Resolution five is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the amount of $5,105 to the circuit court budget to purchase needed computer-related items. I have a motion by Commissioner Burke and a second by Commissioner Milton. Any discussion? There are none, so everyone please vote.
We have an amendment for that. Need to make an amendment.
Okay.
The numbers, the dollar figures were incorrect in the original resolution, and they need to be changed. Both the decrease and increase need to be changed to $6,090.0 cents.
Okay, we have a motion to make an amendment to change those figures. Do we have a second on the amendment?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Nunry. Okay.
You want me to amend to do that? Now we have.
Motion to amend. The motion to amend, Bill didn't he make that motion to amend?
Yeah, I made the motion, but I believe Debbie hit the button to make the amendment.
Okay. That's fine.
That's fine.
They're good.
It's the same. Okay, now you're voting on the amendment.
Anyone with a change of vote? Sixteen yes as amended.
On the amendment. Now we're voting on the resolution as it was amended. Okay, now everyone please vote on the resolution as it was amended.
Anyone with a change of vote? Sixteen yes as amended.
Resolution six is a resolution by Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to budget funds in the amount of $1,882,358.10 within the school's budget. A motion by Commissioner Douglas and a second by Commissioner Milton. You have any questions, anyone? Okay, there are none, so everyone please vote.
Anyone with a change of vote? Motion carries with ten minutes.
Resolution seven is a resolution by Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to budget funds in the amount of $28,000 received from TISA to the school's budget. I have a motion by Milton and a second by Douglas. Any questions about this resolution? There are none, so let's please vote.
Anyone with a change of vote? Motion carries with ten minutes.
Resolution eight is a resolution by Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to budget funds in the amount of $131,425.10 received from TISA to the school budget. A motion by Commissioner Milton, a second by Commissioner Burke. Any questions? Okay, so everyone please vote.
Anyone with a change of vote? Motion carries with ten minutes.
Resolution nine, a resolution by Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to budget funds in the amount of $95,000 received from a reimbursement from the state for paid paternal leave to the school's budget. I have a motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions? There are none, so everyone please vote.
Anyone wish to change your vote? Motion carries with ten minutes.
Resolution number 10 is a resolution by Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to move funds in the amount of $11,391 within the school's budget. A motion by Commissioner Burke and a second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions? I see none, so everyone please vote.
Anyone with a change of vote? Motion carries with ten minutes.
Resolution 11 is a resolution by Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to move funds in the amount of $78,739.10 within the school's budget. A motion by Commissioner Douglas and a second by Commissioner Bain. Any questions? I see none, so everyone please vote.
Anyone with a change of vote? Motion carries with ten minutes.
Resolution 12 is a resolution by Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to move funds in the amount of $77,870.10 within the school's budget. A motion by Commissioner Milton and a second by Commissioner Nunry. Any questions? Okay, there are none, so please vote.
Anyone with a change of vote? Motion carries with ten minutes.
Resolution 13, a resolution by Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to move funds in the amount of $108,361.10 received from a public school security grant to an expenditure line item for maintenance equipment. Need a motion and a second, please. Motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Murphy. Any questions? Okay.
Director Florence, what equipment are you getting? That thing I'm putting on Linda's or what is it? What are you purchasing as far as security?
That security grant, they let us carry over. Most of it is for surveillance cameras, but we do have some latitude, maybe some fencing, replace some doors, things like that. But the security glass, we're thinking we can do that in-house for some of the equipment we have with the innovative school model. But most of that is security cameras.
The glass, I sound new or I have to require anybody put that thing on stuff?
New. If it's new, it's required. If it's existing, it's recommended.
Anyone else? Okay, there are none, so everyone please vote.
Anyone with a change of vote? Motion carries with ten minutes.
Resolution 14 is a resolution by the Benton County Budget Committee to budget funds from the mineral severance tax to the Benton County Highway Department. Motion by Commissioner Milton and a second by Commissioner Bain. Anyone have any questions about what this is about? Okay, there are none, so. Yes, you're recognized.
There's a little history to the mineral severance tax, and I'm sure there's a few here that's not knowledgeable of that, and I'll try to share it with you. First of all, I'm gonna address a subject that I heard at the budget meeting just a few days ago, August the 13th. The Budget Committee was told, "We're taking the severance tax dollars that's going to the general fund and put it in the highway account because we had borrowed money from them years ago, and it's time that we pay them back." The general fund has never borrowed money from the highway department. I've gone back and I've looked at the 12 past years for the highway department's budget. They have not had a balanced budget. All of their budgets were in the red, underfunded. Now, this is legal because they had a fund balance that could cover an underfunded balance in their fiscal year budget. This year, the budget we just passed shows the highway with a $480,000 underfunded budget. Excuse me, that was 2024. 2025 is $322,000. '23, $969,000. '22, $175,000. 2019, $1,145,000 underfunded. I assure you, 12 years of underfunded budget, we're not getting into their underfunded budget to balance the general fund. Moving on. The resolution itself states additional funds from mineral severance tax are required to meet the highway department five-year average. There's a state law that tells the highway department this year is to receive at least as much as what the last five-year average comes to. I've got some old budgets, and I took it upon myself that we do meet the five-year average. This year, we're giving the highway department in county dollars. The highway works off a budget of about $3.5 million. Most of this is from the state, from the gasoline tax. I'm pretty sure the gasoline tax that they're receiving this year is about $2.5 million. They get somewhere about $400,000 from the county every year. This year, they're getting $413,055 estimated dollars. And my five-year average shows a five-year average of $395,388. Moving on. 1920, of the 95 Tennessee state counties, 27 counties didn't have an excise tax, zero. Of the 78 counties that did have an excise tax, all of them was 15 cents, with the exception of five counties, we were at 10 cents. This was under the Lashley, Mayor Lashley's administration. We passed a resolution to increase severance tax to 15 cents. And it just didn't stop here. It had to go to the State General Assembly. I was not able to find the history, the bills that got passed where we could have 15 cents a ton. But I did find this bill that we, was all about the same time. House Bill 1603 and Senate Bill 1626. Benton County, subject to local approval, requires operators liable for the collection and payment to the county of mineral service tax to keep and preserve records necessary to determine the amount of tax due and payable to the county for three years. That means they gotta keep their receipts for three years in case we want to audit their books. And it was all along about the same time the General Assembly approved of us raising our severance tax from 10 cents to 15 cents. Forgive me if I stumbled a little bit, y'all. I've had a shovel in my hand all week.
Okay, Mr. Preston, kind of shorten your speech, please.
Okay.
Come to your last remarks.
If this resolution passes, it allows a budget, budget estimate of $97,000, what's estimated this year, to go to the highway department. To leave the general fund, $97,000, and ladies and gentlemen, this money reoccurs year after year after year. Someone needs to show us the five-year average was missed. We've not seen that yet. We have a resolution to purchase the First Bank Building at $480,000. The Oversight Committee addressed at their meeting this week, an additional $300,000 for the senior building. The emergency management building that the county is gonna build, it's gonna need additional dollars. The money doesn't need to be moved. The highway department is not gonna pay these additional expenses. Next year, when budget tells you no money for an account improvement, a project you might be interested in, a raise for some office, just remember, you voted now to remove $97,000 from the general fund to put in the highway department, and it reoccurs year after year after year. I thank you, Chairman, I'll go to the floor.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Preston. We have.
Can I speak?
Yes, you may.
Several years ago, when we were having difficulty balancing the budget, the highway department agreed to give up part of the mineral severance tax to help out with that. And it worked out fine for a year or two. The last two years, we've had trouble meeting the five-year maintenance of effort for the highway department. Each of those years, we have given them back some of the mineral severance tax that we were receiving. And I believe that the correct amount is $158,000 is what has to go to the highway department. It was felt by the Budget Committee that because we were having to put money back into the highway department to help them with their maintenance of effort for five-year average, that we'd be better off to go ahead and make a resolution to put all of the mineral severance tax back. And that's why this resolution is here. And I believe that the highway superintendent here, would you like to do a thing, look or say something like that?
I'd like for everyone to know upfront that by no means every rock, every rocket leaves this county, we get money off of it. If you're nonprofit, if you're counties, if you're state, we get zero. Only thing we get is private entities, private entities. We did raise it 15 cents several years ago. I think we had a pretty good discussion about it. I don't know whether, it's been several years ago that that happened. But the maintenance of effort that we're speaking of is just what the county gives the highway department. We rely on gas tax, federal tax, basically. That $400,000 Rocky's talking about includes the mineral severance tax. That is a local revenue, comes from local money. Goes to the state, comes back to us. But we're grateful for every penny we can get. 18 years ago, when I became highway superintendent, we could put a mile of blacktop down for $26,000. We took bids last week, it's $107,000 per mile. Now, our revenue hasn't come up any to speak of, and we're stretched very thin. But every dime we can get would sure help in trying to maintain what we do. Yes, sir?
So it wasn't $90, this year is $150,000, right? And mineral taxes?
$157,500 is what the law says.
And what it was, the law requires, right? And what you've been doing is cause the budget side, you didn't let the county have that.
Yes.
That's fine. So where was that money going? Was it going into debt service? Was it going into the general fund? Or was it going to the general fund? So we're probably fixing to leave with $158,000.
No, 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 no.
They're already gonna get that regardless. This is extra money that we had coming from them to us, going to the general fund because they gave up part of that money. And we had, because of shortfall on their five-year maintenance effort, we've had to put money back into that the last two years. And we put it back from the mineral severance tax. So the Budget Committee felt like we might, as well, we should just go ahead and give them back the mineral severance tax. So we're having to take money out of it and put it back into their budgets the last two years.
We've been putting it in general fund. And then we've been pulling it back out.
Well, we did in budgets the last two years, yeah.
Last two years. So now, for sure, it's not even gonna come to general.
No. Whatever's collected would go to the highway department.
Have you always used all the mineral tax to get you back up the power, like we got $160,000?
Yes, you have to use it.
Yeah, but did you use it all? I mean, did you use most of the time? That's what I was, I was just looking at, looking at our money, property taxes. sales tax, mineral taxes, that we all got going to the general fund, I don't know which one in the debt fund. It all leads up to purposes that we're looking at, projects we're looking at for the county. Being the Sears building, being the M.A. building, uh, being remodeled, what we're talking about, the electric office, and, uh, the proposal to buy First Bank, uh, from the way all that's going on. So, I'm just looking, and that's, that's kind of what I'm going to, if we just lost that amount of money?
No.
But we didn't lose that amount of money.
You, you mean the 150?
Yeah.
No, that's, that money is designated, that's law.
That money comes to us regardless.
We used to put it in general fund and give it to you, correct?
What, the thing I remember about it is usually around $25,000, $30,000. It's all over the 157,500 that the county gives.
Yeah, because it's about 180,000.
Yeah, right.
We got about $25,000 somehow, but, okay.
We're having, we're not having to put money back to make their five-year effort. So, rather than do that, give them all the severance tax.
The state says it goes all mineral taxes goes to the highway department.
Yep.
So, that's good, help us out because you had no shortfalls, right? It hadn't been that many years ago when we came there, right?
It's been several years.
It's been several.
And there were a couple of years that it didn't, didn't affect anything, but then the last two years, his five-year maintenance efforts had been a little bit short, therefore we moved severance tax. Yeah.
It's been maybe a little longer than that.
Yeah. Maybe that.
Yeah, okay.
Any other question? My head's standing up here.
Okay. Well, Zane, can I respond?
Yes.
I'm looking at page 13 of the budget that we just passed. Section 13, it's above all the page. Be it for the resolve that the mineral severance tax be deposited to the Highway Flag Public Works Fund in the amount of $167,500, with anything above that with the remainder going to the general fund. The highway gets the first 167,500.
158, we got 158. We've had to put the additional 10 in there to make their five-year effort, maintenance of effort.
I'm reading 167,500 on page 13 of the budget we just passed.
Yes, because the budget, if you put the two together, that's what that is, and that's what that is on the budget for.
Chairman, I'm going to page 19. This is under county local option taxes. I'm going to account 40,200 line item 4280, mineral severance tax. Budget has estimated $97,000 going to the general fund in excise tax this year. That's their estimate.
In excise or severance?
I'm sorry. Thank you for the correction, severance tax. That's all, Chairman. I'll go to the floor.
Anyone else? I guess there are no other questions, it's time to vote.
No, I covered it.
Okay, now, if there are no other questions, everyone, please vote. You want to change your vote? Motion, yes, John. Number 15 is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the amount of $450 received from a refund from Loretta Lynn's Ranch to the senior citizen budget. Motion by Commissioner Price and a second by Commissioner Burke. Any questions? Since there are none, please vote. You want to change your vote? Motion carries, yes. Resolution 16 is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to budget funds in the amount of $5,000 within the airport capital projects budget to properly fund airport maintenance due to an error in the budget line item. I have a motion by Commissioner Burke and a second by Commissioner Melton. I know we do have an amendment to this resolution. Now, okay, the floor is open. Any questions?
What was the error? I mean, what happened?
Can I answer that? They get a $15,000 maintenance grant every year, and it got put down as $10,000 in the budget. But you got to have it in there to spend it, and then you get reimbursed. So, we've got to appropriate it so they can use it. But we, we get 100% of the state over here.
Oh, about that. And I apologize, but there is no amendment to that one. It's the next one. Any questions about resolution 16? Okay, everyone, please vote. You want to change your vote? Motion carries, 16. Resolution 17 is a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to request permission to enter into a contract on behalf of Benton County for the purchase of the First Bank Building on the Court Square in Camden for $480,000, with solar financing and to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of $120,000 to a proper line item to fund a down payment for this purpose. I have a motion to, second to bring this to the floor. I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold and a second by Commissioner Douglas. Floor is open.
Is amendment?
Yeah, okay, now we need a amendment, it's Phil Melton. Second to the amendment, Sonny Hong.
Okay, Ed, uh, one of the first things I want to say is, this amendment would change from a two-thirds vote to a simple majority vote to pass this, because it is amending the payment method from capital projects for the down payment and making it four equal payments out of debt service. The way it's set up now, you had three payments out of debt service and one out of capital projects. The capital projects, if you use money out of that, it limits, or it restricts the amount of money you have to put toward other things, such as park improvements and things of that nature, because it has a broader use than what the debt service does. The debt service is actually designed to make these payments as such. So, that is, the basic thing is changing the way that it will be paid, and that would be out of debt service. I actually believe that we could do it in two payments instead of four, um, uh, looking at the amount of money in debt service that we have right now. And I also want to add something. Commissioner Fowler has requested that we add something to this, and if I don't get this right, correct me on it, okay? Well, like I said, at the very last, whereas, where it says, whereas, Mayor Ward requests permission from the Benton County Commission to enter into this contract, and, after and, no contract can be executed until the building has been inspected and approved. Is that by local codes?
Okay, okay.
By local and state codes?
And the reason we want to do this is, look where we're at with the Sears building now. And I've walked through the bank, and it's an awesome-looking place. It's still 19, it's 50, 60 years old. It's Conners Bank, Conners Union Bank back in the day, remember that, it's about to break down. It looks good, and then Mark's talked about it, a little aggravated at me, but we don't want to end up like we are right now. We'd want to vote for this. Do I think it's a good idea? No. But, do you want to get stuck? Again, I can tell you right now, the bathrooms are not going to be codes. I don't know nothing about grand law, and I've been told you can't be grand law again when you sell a place. You can't keep, you can't keep going as it was because it's over. You've got to meet all the codes, and as Benton County, or City Camden has adopted 2018 international codes. We, we have a codes guy now. I've had to deal with him, you know, we're, we're fine. I painted my step shallow, done my rail shallow, painted my gas lines yellow, trying to do that. Maybe we've been a little lenient on that, and everybody's a lackadaisical. But on top of that, this is no longer First Banks, one of the 20 banks they have. It is now a state government big, uh, building, correct? Is that what it becomes? When we buy that as a county? So, I wonder if we get here, and there's a rumor that the old electric office has asbestos in. So, I wonder if we come into this. I know it's been remodeling phase, got some good-looking foundation on it, but we don't know what the bones are. It needs to be looked at, just make, meet codes before we enter into any kind of agreement. Is that not a fair request?
Yes. Did everybody get that addition to it? That no, no contract can be executed until the building has been inspected and approved by local and state codes?
I mean, well, look at where we're in. You know, we don't know if this is going to have a fire suppression system, and we don't know. We don't know. Do y'all know? Has anybody looked at?
Yeah, I have.
Okay.
You don't have to do the codes for a building that's just been built. I mean, just, just been used. If you're going to do a remodeling, and you have to go get a building permit, then you have to bring in all this code.
Right.
But a building is a building, just like a house. Just because it changes owners don't mean you got to go to the codes guy and say...
It's a commercial building.
Yeah.
Okay, it changes everything, that house.
No, no, I'm saying unless you're doing a construction project there, the codes don't even come in there to check it. Plus, they just remodeled that building in 2018, everything in it.
Right, except for the bathroom.
No, the bathrooms are great. If you don't fit in there...
This addition will satisfy the request that you had.
It satisfies mine, but you do what you want to do. I'm just one thought.
No, I'm asking...
You gotta squeeze your butt in there sideways into a bathroom. You think a wheelchair's going to roll in it? If you go downstairs, the bathroom's big enough down there, but you can't get a 36-inch wide wheelchair through a 30-inch door. So, that's just one thing I've seen. I don't know what it'll take to fix that, but on the state side of it, when this is now going to be a commercial building, it ain't going to be in and out. That's one thing I see, that's it. And if we can get, if that's it, it's done. But, you know, I do care, I'm going to say I don't get, what, what did you do? What I do, because it's our taxpayer dollars, and we don't want to get stuck again. So, that's it, that's all I got left. It ain't, it's just small things.
Okay, first of all, we've got two amendments. So, we have to vote on one amendment, and then the other.
Are you...
You've got, your amendment is one amendment, and his amendment is a second amendment. So, we can't add two amendments together.
Yeah, okay. Uh, I believe we have somebody else.
Okay, Commissioner Price, three.
I have, I have a question for Mr. Melton. Mr. Melton, um, if this amendment goes through, passes, what this, what kind of vote does it take to pass this resolution?
That's what I stated.
I think there's no money.
I'm sorry.
Right, something is that if it takes a two-thirds vote, you can't vote to not require a two-thirds vote. If it's some type of a different procedure, like Mr. Melton said, it may not require a two-thirds vote. I haven't read it, I don't know.
Yeah.
But the chair and the mayor and Mr. Melton probably do have a better grip on that than any of the rest of them.
If they don't, if money's not being appropriated, I just believe you're, you don't require a simple majority.
No, it's not appropriated.
It's not appropriated, so it's not falling in the...
That's why I made that statement at the very beginning, was that it was changing it, that there was no appropriation of money in this, only in this year's budget. It would make simply a, a permission to enter into a contract after codes have been satisfied. That puts it into next budget year, and it would come up during the budget process to provide the money for the payment next year.
Raising taxes.
Well, in them side, it is.
I don't see raising taxes with this, because the money is available in debt service.
Okay, let's talk one at a time, please. That's okay. Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Bane? Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Bane? If, okay, if you want to say something, please raise your hand and be recognized.
Well...
Okay. Mr. Melton wants to say something. You're recognized.
I was just, on the surface, it looks like it can't be done. But if there's a procedure that the mayor and you and Mr. Melton say it's okay, it's obviously there. I'm not familiar with it. And Mr. Price challenges it, we're going to have to find out before y'all vote, like you want to do the math, but if it's not right...
It's easy to find out. It's a simple majority, and this is appropriating money, and this is not appropriating money. That's why the change in the resolution.
We don't even know what the...
I, I do know it is not appropriating money, it does not take a two-thirds vote. We're not appropriating any money right now. We're just voting to let the mayor enter into a contract. That's what it's about.
Did we not initially, did we not initially appropriate that money? And for some reason, we pulled it back?
No, it was never appropriated. It was discussed, and we were planning to put it into the budget, but when we got into the budget process and found out the monies that we had, there was not enough monies to do it, and the monies were prioritized to go into the Smith property as being the more important property to deal with than, than this because of the...
Because it's going to make debt service get too low, correct?
Yeah, it was going to draw the debt service too low.
What's interest rate on them, do you know?
Uh, I...
Marty, Marty said that he'll do it for a time.
For a time, and what is that, seven?
Grounds lower than that.
Uh, yeah, but I don't know what that...
Well, is he going to do it on a five-year long?
That's what the bank tomorrow, I think he's giving to us the cost.
Yeah, is he going to do it on a five-year?
It's a four-year, but I think we can do it in two years.
So, the $120,000, we do it five years, if I, that's what I'm paying next for $50,000.
You don't do 120 for five years, you're only going to do it for four, and possibly just two.
Or $50,000, $60,000, or $40, $50,000?
Need to use a calculator.
I don't know what time.
That's not, that's not even close.
Hey, um, uh, listen, since we're doing, having to do this as two amendments, would it be best to do your amendment, do Commissioner Fowler's amendment first, and then do the other amendment? Because his amendment is adding to the amendment that I have, so...
It would be required for his to go first. That's why I'm...
I'm sure. Okay.
Okay, do we have others that are wanting to speak on this? Next one is Commissioner Arnold. You're next, according to the...
First Bank Building, we're going to have to have an annex. As far as the cost, I think what Dwayne's got an ideal of having, making the cost is a good idea, because we need to know if there's something hidden that we don't know about. And for everybody in the Facebook, man, I have nothing to do with selling this property. Our real estate company has nothing to do with it. But, as a taxpayer, I know that we're going to have to have an annex. You figure out the square footage of that building, $78,000 square footage, the building and the property. You cannot go in and remodel anything, $78,000 square footage. You're buying the land, the property, and the ownership just inside of it. I'm like Roseanne. It's kind of embarrassing when you go to these other counties and walk into the mayor's office or the courthouse, and they have nice conference rooms, and the mayor not even have a conversation with somebody in his office without somebody walking by and sticking their head in and sitting their duck. I mean, there's no privacy in his office whatsoever. I mean, it's, it's a, Dwayne's right, we need to make sure there's nothing that the codes or something out there. I don't have a problem with it. But I do think that this is a good opportunity for us to have an annex around Court Square, a building that has been remodeled, a, a building that will serve a lot of our needs for a long time. We got other stuff that we want to move? Yeah, we are. We're going to have to have other buildings, do other projects. That just natural life, though. We want to constantly, we want to grow them, we're going to have to move forward. We can't always put our brakes on and wait and say we don't want it, you know? Because that's all I've ever heard for my last 26 years of life, that, that, you know, Benton County's not having that, we don't want that in this county, you know? Everybody wants you to do stuff, but then they don't want you to do it, you know? So, you know, we've got to make a decision sooner or later, are we going to move forward and, and make some decisions that may be a little unpopular, or may be a little tougher to swallow? But you know what a good deal is, go around, do a work match, and say, hey, I have a good deal to run the park. It pops up on you sometimes. This bank is a good financial investment for this county, because we've got to have the revenue. If you don't think so, walk around here and look at these places. This courthouse was built, you had two people in the... the office. That's what they designed for, two people. You know where they're now, they got four or five people in one little hotel. My goal and my dream was when the county bought the Walmart building, we used to go out there and have our city center, and live about fifteen offices in there, and have one big nice building that we was gonna have, and this will build it. Whatever you need, you can go to parking at one parking lot, and you can service everybody. So, folks, you know, we got somebody to buy it, have retail in, that's fine. But we cannot bury our heads in sand when we get a good opportunity to have an annex. I'm telling you, go out here and try to buy that lot, go out here and try to do it, do it in scratch. He's gonna eat your lunch, he's gonna steal your goods.
Number two is Commissioner Fowler. Do you wanna speak?
You know, you know, we done had the project going on putting one of the old electric office. That's why we're doing redone Sears building, moving the uh ag extension down there, putting the uh senior citizens in the Sears building, and moving the veterans affair, Mr. Lawler, Miller, and the DFW into the old uh senior citizens building there. Along with what they would like to see is your veterans affair officer down there, so we can work the kiosks. I'm a veteran. I done thirty-two years ago, or out here, so that was active duty and playing one of the DOD. I understand part of having to work with someone, and I'm a member of the DFW. So, I understand the veterans thing being out there, but I thought we had all these projects going on already. You just admitted already that we got down below what debt service is, and one or two people says it was for the sheriff's cars. You know, that's fine. I pulled reports about the sheriff's things right here, and you might talk about it a little later, and that's why he's looking at it now, because I'm making math, and we're speeding ticket, and I'll get my license probably. But, you know, we, we just got a lot of money. Everybody wants a pretty house. Everybody wants a nice car. Everybody wants to put on that face. But in the long run, you still gotta make payments. And uh, that's, that's just it. Uh, I agree, it is an awesome deal. Hey, I'm sure a few of us can probably beat that eight, nine, seven, five prime rate. You know, I can get a couple of letters together, we can probably beat that rate if we can define it. But, um, do, I just, I just wanna see Benton County grow. I'd like to see it in industry. Uh, I'd like to see it in other things. I know Mark's jammed in there. I mean, you can't, you can't, anyways, you can't do nothing in there. I agree with you. But I thought we were working toward that with the electric office and getting Wanda a productive area, looking at more for driver's license testing center and things of that nature, and making Wanda's own office in a nice office center. And Charlie Douglas had mentioned that in nine months, the building out here will be done for ag extension to move into it. So, anyways, that's, that's all I got. Just make sure you don't miss, you know, we don't, we don't end up buying Sears building, we'll lost that one.
Thank you. Commissioner Price?
No.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Price, is it okay with you for him to respond to Dwayne before you speak?
Uh, what you just said was all good and fine, but you say we have this project started for the old uh electric company building?
Well, that's our intent. Is that-
It was the intent.
It was that intent. Raise your hand if you thought that was the intent, if that's where things going. Shrewd to God, I can pull out some tape.
Could I speak, please?
Yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
It, it, the intent may be there, but the building was bought two, three years ago in a previous administration with that plans. If there's plans, and then there's doing it. So, what you're gonna have to do to get that office started for one, if we do that, if we go forward with it, it's not a project we've started. It's a project we talked about. But you gotta start somewhere and get, start getting estimates. So, before we can do that, the people that's in there have to be out. So, the Sears building has to be finished. Then they'll move there. So, that's one year. So, then you start with the engineers and architects figuring out how you're gonna change that building, and what all you're gonna have to do to it, get it up to code. You know what I'm saying?
Code.
If you remodel. We're not remodeling that. It's just been remodeled. So-
I thought we were gonna check the teller, teller things out, put a wall up.
That's not remodeling. That, that's not setting you up to pull up a permit, unless you change that outside walls or the footprint. But what I'm trying to say is, that's gonna be a year before they get moved. You do this other project, how long's it taken us to get the EMA building going? Anybody worked on the EMA project? Has it been six years, seven years, and we still haven't broke ground? By the time you get that done and put out for bids and everything, it's only three or four years before that building can be fixed, which means it'll be five, six, seven years before Wanda gets moved or have more room.
Well, we took Wanda over here then.
Or the mayor's office gets to, well, this is what we've talked about, and I've already told you a few times, that if the mayor's office moves next over there, they need more office space. Then the people with the teller, uh, Wanda, she can have all that space over here where the mayor's office is, so she can start the driver's uh license again, and the stuff she needs room for that she don't have room to.
And all the traffic's still sitting in the courthouse, when she's one of the most high-traffic areas.
I'm just, I'm telling you, what, there's time limit. You're acting like we just jumped down there and do that.
I agree.
So, if we're waiting five, six, seven years, how will we help with the problems that we have now? This, this is the answer to our problems that we have now, and it can be immediate, and it don't require a building permit. All it is, is just buying a building that's already been remodeled and moving into it. So, we can do that today. You know what I mean? I think it's, I, I personally think it's the only way to go, because it's such a good deal. You don't get a, you, how much do you estimate that building being worth?
It's worth at least, the way it looks, and the lawyer's officer, I think, it's worth about eight hundred thousand.
Seventy-nine thousand dollars, you know? So, it's, it's a real deal. They're giving us all the brandy furniture and everything else with it for that price. I, I think it's something we need to do. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Price?
Just a second, one comment. Uh, right now, the prime lending rate is, information is eight points up percent.
Okay, Commissioner Bane?
Uh, well, I, I have to say, put my input in, and I'm totally against it. Not only am I totally against it, but, and I did not put a post on Facebook, but on everything in Benton County, the people are totally against it. They have been blowing it up like crazy. They do not want this expenditure. And even though if it's purchased now, you're saying it will be in the next budget money, then we're gonna be screaming, we don't have enough money, we gotta raise the property taxes to pay for this. Now, there is a conference room that's written right up above in, just down from the mayor's office, the conference room, with a big table that could be used for private meetings. And yes, it's got storage stuff in there. I like this, but there's plenty of room to hold a private meeting in that conference room. And that's my opinion, and I'm sticking to it. We do not need, the people are suffering now. They're having a hard time putting food on the table. They're having a hard time getting by, and they do not need this tax, their property taxes going up in this tax.
This would not raise property taxes.
Well, somehow it's gotta be paid.
Okay, just a minute.
Kenneth.
Kenneth.
Well, first of all, you might be on the tax, because we got engineering involved in Grant. The original plan was to put Wanda down in the electric building, and I don't know what the cost of renovating it, surely can be astronomical, that give Mark over double the space up here. Basically, what the amendment does is change it from two-thirds vote to a gorgon vote. That's the main thing that the amendment does. I give a quote.
It does do that, but it also changes payment method using the debt service money rather than capital projects money. And that allows the capital projects money be used for other uh projects. And the debt services, and that's what the debt service is for, is to pay things of this nature.
Commissioner Farr, you're recognized. Commissioner Farr.
That's the very first thing that I stated, was that it changed it.
Commissioner Farr is recognized.
Uh, I was down at the old electric company building the other day, from time to time. And I just took a gander, upnosed it around in there. Uh, that building is rough as a cow, I tell you. You get an engineer involved, like pulling your car in, change your oil before you leave there, you owe eight hundred dollars for changing oil. And that's what's gonna happen in this building down here. Building was bought before this code guy fell in the play. And we could kinda knock along and do this the best we could. But with all these engineering things, this code there, it changed the play of all that. And you're gonna end up with a bunch of money in that building down there. And, you know, the parking is awful down there, as far as, you know, I can get in and out, but old people can get in and out. There on that corner there, you know, it's, it's bad, bad location to get in and out of. And always cause trouble to curbs. But uh, that's something to keep in consideration of what the cost of making that thing useful, like what is gonna need to be done.
In time.
In time, too. You know, you're gonna have a year in between going from one office to another office, you know? This stuff needs to be ready to move in, and that's not gonna happen for another two or three years, probably.
Okay, Commissioner Arnold?
One quick thing. I wouldn't wanna commission, a lot of you wouldn't when they voted to buy that electric. I scratched my head when they bought me. Why in the world would we buy that building? You know, is the building, uh, if the tour guide comes, I'm gonna get any. I just built out a concrete box. I mean, it's probably a good, good place to be. But uh, everybody kept saying, oh, we need to move Wanda there, we need to move Wanda there. She needs a drive-by. Why in the hell would a clerk need a drive-by? If you have traffic backfilling, talking to you, you know, trying to get you taxed. You know, they don't need a drive, a drive-by. You know, you want a place to put our veterans uh office? Why don't we, you know, easily remodel that building before we can put them in there or some of these other smaller agencies in there? Wanda, people's used to coming to the courthouse to get their tax and stuff. I mean, I think Wanda needs to stay where she's at, with the mayor's, because, you know, it just makes better sense. Now, Kenneth said, well, we can, you know, it ain't gonna cost that much for her to do that building. That's what he said about the Sears building, where we're at. I'm sorry. I mean, folks, we're not looking in our due diligence at what it's gonna cost to do something. Yes, we got a new code guy there, but we're building another building. You gotta meet your blueprints. You gotta have, you know, it ain't like, you know, go out here and build a house or remodel it more or less. You know, and, you know, I guarantee you, you know, when they, we set your bids on the Sears building, I need good and well, it's gonna cost us more money than what those bids were. You know, you know, it, it was no way that was gonna come through in that, in that lab. But, to go down there and remodel that building, it's, it's, the time, the time is money for our, you know? We need to have an area that, that's worth the money. I mean, that building's worth the money. If a man, you know, the county needs a building, an annex building, is set right here on the corner, he can walk back and forth to the courthouse if he needs to. You asked about, maybe about that conference room upstairs, right over here? That conference room is where the jury meets. That's where the attorneys meets. You've got court three days a week up here, you know? So, you've got people in and out of that conference room. So, the mayor just can't come in and say, hey, get out to it, or jury, how about have that conference room? You know, we're talking about worrying about raising taxes on a building that is, you know, a no-brainer, really. And, and then we're sitting here, we're gonna give five percent raises. I mean, I'm gonna raise the taxes, you know, Daniel, some of this other stuff, who wants to do it? I mean, to me, you know, we gotta invest in our county, and we need to invest in, in moving forward, not sitting there putting the brakes on. I, you know, I had somebody asking me, why are you pushing for industry? You know, we need industry more, we do bigger things, new buildings. Folks, we have been pushing for industry. Look at the interstate. We've got a new business up there at the interstate. You got the Love's Truck Stop somewhere. You've got the, the, you paid them company. You've got the industrial board bringing in a machine shop. You've got the industrial board purchase, purchased another fifty acres, I think, out by the industrial park. They purchased land on six forty-one that we've been wanting for years to be able to get a road on six forty-one straight over to the industrial park. We're moving forward. We got the Smith property. But it don't come with, you know, God bless you, thank you for doing it. It costs a little money to do it, and we're gonna have to do some of that.
Costs beans and taters now.
It costs beans and taters.
Beans and taters.
Commissioner, no, uh, Mr. Douglas is next in line. If you don't, you can look up here and tell when you're in line, please, okay? Commissioner Douglas?
So, really quickly, though, one of the biggest things to me about buying this bank is the veterans. That right now, if you look at a need, the veterans need a place to go into. That's, I had several complaints on that, and I know that you're part of it and everything, but that's one of those that if we don't buy this, you talk about the moving to replace, you are four or five years working to do anything for them. And I've seen a lot of the posts on Facebook that are mad about it, one hundred percent, that they are mad because they think this is going to be Mark Ward's office by himself. And that's, if we buy this, and it is only Mayor Ward's office to live in there, shame on us. Because if it is ready to move into in two or three weeks, it needs to be the mayor's office and the veterans that live in there.
Are you, that's the two things. Are you suggesting the DFW gets to move in there with our veterans affair person, just that whole bottom half of county?
Hey, Commissioner Fowler, you're out of line. I'm sorry, okay?
I'm getting my turn. I'll ask you that.
Is, is that on?
May I respond to Marty?
You may respond to Marty before we move on.
I appreciate what you said, but I just wanted to answer this question. Yes.
The DFW can live in that lot.
American Legion, DFW, they, they need a place to meet. They've been asking the county for twenty years, and no one's ever-
You can look them up with kioshs. We can-
Yeah, see, the veterans affairs administrator will be moved down there. They'll be in their office.
DFW.
But yes, they'll, they'll have a place to meet there, where they can keep their stuff there, not have to take it home every time to go meet the Southern Western or somewhere. They've never had a meeting spot in the county.
It's on the heart strand there.
Well, I mean, we're trying to do something for the veterans, and that's what they've said all along. But if a veteran comes up here to meet with this veterans administrator, she's in a closet.
She is.
And there's a, only a half wall in there between it and the little conference room you were referring to, where the comptroller stays in there for four or five months a year. That's the office space we have to give them. And the rest of it's storage, that's why, the rest of it's become storage, because we have to save that spot for the comptroller anyway. You know what I mean?
Well, let's look at it. Let's inspect the building.
Commissioner Fowler, I'm sorry, you're out of line, okay? Uh, next is, first of all, is there any commissioner that has not spoke yet? Because these commissioners have been doing all the speaking, and I'm supposed to recognize somebody that has not spoke on this matter before you continue speaking. So, Commissioner Burke?
I had been through this before with electric systems. Nobody wanted the new office. Nobody wanted the warehouse. We, and there's always, we were happy if they're on the east, but it was an improvement to the county. And you can see now, it paid off. We didn't have to run a truck around up there. Now you've got one of the best electric systems in the whole county, um, state, right here. They said when they built that office, you don't need that office, you can't use it. Every office in that building now is occupied. Muscat engineers and everything else. The same people on your Facebook that says we don't need it, is the same one that said we didn't need electric system. And now you got one of the best ones in any county right there. That's like I said.
Now, Commissioner Bane?
Okay. I wanna respond first to Commissioner Arnold. The conference room that I was referring to is the one there on the right, on the way to the bathrooms down at the end of the hall, not the ones up here. But of course, these are open when there's no court. They could be used for a private meeting without having to purchase another building. This, the quarter eighty thousand dollars is to purchase the building. We haven't even got to the cost of renovation and all of that. Where's that money gonna come from?
There's no regulation.
In his response to uh Commissioner Burke, uh, I don't lost my train of thought there of what you were saying. My goodness. Uh, uh, anyway, uh, the electric building that was purchased, yes, we did need another electric building, but county owns several buildings that we haven't been able to unload. Namely, we got in, over our heads with Walmart buildings that we haven't been able to unload yet. And, and we gotta stop buying all this stuff. We're gonna have the clinic building when the, the senior citizens move out of it. That's gonna be another building that we're gonna have. We can't keep spending money that we don't have. And yes, I know what I was gonna say now. The people are the ones that pay the taxes to the county, and they should have a huge say in where their tax dollars go. And if they don't want it, we're supposed to be their representatives. We're not supposed to go against what the people want. And the people do not want this building, just like they didn't want the Walmart building when it got bought. But it got purchased anyway, and now they're all in their uproar because we got this building that's gonna cost six million dollars to repair. We can't get anybody to buy it, and we're just stuck with it. That's all I got to say.
Commissioner Fowler?
My last turn. I promise. I'll quit.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, the, the, talk about the veterans thing, so you're saying the veterans, the other, we could all be down in that basement. All I'm asking you to do is just, let's look at the building, make sure if we making changes, if we pulling those tellers out, that we don't have to hire an engineer, we can't run off renderings, make sure it meets the local code, which it says- codes, which it says, I just got a text that says yes, we have to have local codes for the bathroom. See what it's gonna cost, weigh it all out. You know, the veterans thing, that pulls on, that pulls on a lot of people's heartstrings if they have a place to go and it's theirs. You know what I mean? Well, you're here for a year. Uh, that was initial thing with going into where the senior citizens were, you know, and they all combined, so do that. The other side of me says Wanda's office is the perfect place for the veterans' first, person because, oh, veterans here, veterans here. Wanda's office sees more traffic than moving court than anything in this place. That's the reason why I think it, a lot of us used to think it, but I guess it depends on what time of the day it is, that she needs her own world down there. Well, she can do her driver's license testing. I'll just not let Gary Farr come in there over hers when he's leaking. But, you know, that's, that's our, that's, that was our main thing, I thought. But my main concern is, I do not want to get, just like we said, with the Sears building, and not just think, just think there's something. Mark's probably learned a lot with that Sears building on how much that's, you know, what we've gotten, how we've gotten, gotten, changed a lot of money. I just don't want it to happen over here, and that's it. I think the building should be inspected before we say, hey, let's pay eight and a half percent for four years, which we may pay it off in two and a half, two years or two and a half.
There's, there's, there are funds to pay it off.
Right, exactly. That, that's what I'm looking at. Talk to the veterans, able, do it, inspect it. Talk to the veterans, make sure that's something they're looking for, and, you know, we need to vote.
Um, I'm starting to say, we've talked about this. I think we're repeating our comments over and over. Commissioner Miller, I'm gonna recognize Commissioner Miller and Commissioner Arnold, and then we're gonna vote. Commissioner Miller.
My understanding is that when the seniors move out, the veterans, it's gonna move out there. We're gonna give them a place. There's plenty of options for the veterans' administrator to go out there. No point in putting them over here across the road unless, unless we just have to. I don't know, Mark said it would cost anything to renovate this building. Um, I don't disagree with that, but Mr. Fowler says there's problems we got over it, we gotta fix. We'll see.
Commissioner Arnold.
I see. I was kidding about the question, but.
You don't want to say anything more? Okay, anyone else? I think we spent enough.
First question.
Okay.
No, I agree with that in my face. Talk about Dwayne's motion. Has he made a motion to a second on that? All I see is Phil's amendment.
No, he has not got a second on his motion. To amend.
I'll make a motion on, uh, Commissioner Fowler's amendment.
Okay, we have a second. Now, I have a question for the mayor. They're talking about codes officer. Did you not say that because there's no remodeling, there would be no codes officer involved?
I don't, I don't know where everybody's talking about the money for remodeling. It's not gonna be a remodel there. It's already, it was remodeled in 2018. Yeah, it was remodeled in 2018, so everything's just like new.
Okay. So you, you heard the response to Dwayne's amendment. Okay, now we're going to vote. We're gonna vote on Dwayne's amendment first. Dwayne's amendment, would you want to repeat your amendment?
All I would like to say before any contracts are signed, that it needs local codes and state codes, because nothing can be grandfathered. They've adopted the international 2018 codes in the city. Down the top of there, just like we run into, change anything in there, we have to have an engineer. If we change anything in the, in the government building.
This feels like a question.
Well, I'm talking about Dwayne's.
Do you need, Wanda, do you need, uh, do you need his, his amendment, or do you have his amendment?
We're not, we're voting on them separate. Cannot vote on two amendments.
You can't divide them?
Do you wanna read?
We are, we are dividing them. You can't vote on two amendments at the same time.
You wanna read that amendment?
So Dwayne's amendment is first. But I just have a question, so we can clarify, I'm not trying to debate, is, he, he doesn't want a contract signed until a codes officer comes in.
I've got, I've got it written down the way, the way you said it. His amendment would be after the word "and" is no contract can be executed until the building has been inspected and approved by local and state codes, which, that's fine. I mean, makes sense.
That's still a second amendment, though. Your amendment is.
That's his amendment.
Yeah, your amendment was the first amendment. Now he's made a second amendment to it. So we're gonna vote on that amendment by itself.
Yes.
First, okay. Now, that, that's the only question. I'm confused is, if we vote on a contract, that we can't sign a contract until codes, but we're not, but the codes officer doesn't have to come, so what do we do then?
Your, your request is that he come?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll have a written statement coming.
Okay, so you're going to request it whether we need it or not?
Yeah, he don't have to come, but, I mean, we'll, if that's what they're wanting to do, that's what we'll do.
Okay, so now are we all, are we all clear about Dwayne's amendment? Are you ready to vote?
Are we going to vote on Phil's amendment first?
No, it has to be Dwayne's.
Dwayne's. That's what I thought we were going to do.
Okay.
We're voting on Phil's amendment.
No, Dwayne's.
Dwayne's.
Let's look at it.
We're voting, no, Dwayne before we vote on Phil's.
Yes, sir. That's, that's the proper chain of voting on, on amendments.
Did you say the amendment first?
No.
Last amendment that gets voted on first. This was the last amendment.
Chair, just to clarify, Dwayne's motion is that we don't want to enter into a contract until we talk to the codes guy, make sure, or if he could change his amendment, that you enter into a contract subject to being approved by the code.
Need the wording as it is.
As it is. Of course, I just got the text too from the state car marshal, so here we got that going on. A lot of people watching this, folks. You just never know.
They are.
Making sure my eyebrows trimmed up.
You're not voting on this amendment. You're voting on this as Phil's amendment. We're voting on Dwayne's. We're voting on Dwayne's amendment.
You gotta vote on the second one first.
The second one comes in, the second in and the second, and first out is how we do it. So we're going to vote on Dwayne's amendment.
Can you just take a voice vote on that?
Oh, thanks. No, no, no. Chair, are you ready? Dwayne's amendment about the no contract. Okay. Yes.
Phil was second, Dwayne was motion. Correct, everybody?
Yeah.
All right. I'm checking.
We're voting on what Dwayne put in words about the codes officer and the contract.
That's it.
Okay, so, are we ready?
If they have no authority there to say.
Now we're voting for what Dwayne amended. So if you're for Dwayne's amendment, vote yes.
You want to change your vote?
I do, Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Anyone else? Fifteen yes, one no.
Okay, now we are voting on, on the amendment that Phil made, which is written out for you to read with Dwayne's amendment, which has already been approved.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's already approved. So now we're voting on this amendment that you have in front of you. That was written by Phil. So we're, we're voting on this amendment. Okay, now we're voting on this amendment. And then we're gonna go back, then we're gonna go back on, then we're gonna go back to this and vote as if it was the only wish twice.
Showing exhibit C voted.
Now we're voting on Phil's amendment. If you're for Phil, this amendment.
It says, it says amendment C. Okay, are you, okay, motion?
We're voting on seventeen as amended.
We're voting on amendment seventeen.
Not yet.
You got another amendment?
Your amendment.
Yes.
That's where Katie, from two thirds, would argue.
It change, it changes how the payment is done, and it changes that also.
So if you vote, so if you vote yes on it, you're changing to from two thirds code to majority.
No, now there's not a two thirds vote.
No, it, yeah, their amendment makes a change. Yeah, Dwayne's. Yeah, because there's no appropriation. It changes it from two thirds to seven majority.
Now we are ready to vote on the amendment that you have in your hand, which is the amendment by Commissioner Melton and who else? And Commissioner Hall. So if you're in favor of this amendment, you vote yes. And after this, we're going to vote on the real resolution as it has been amended twice. Okay, so everyone please vote.
Anyone want to change your vote? Fifteen yes, six no. Okay. Seven majority will pass.
It has been amended both times. Okay. Are you ready for the, okay. After we vote on this, we will be taking a ten minute recess. I mean, ten minute break.
Chairman, before we speak on the immediate ready motion, can I have?
Is it concerning this?
Concerning what we're about to vote on.
Well, that discussion is already closed, Commissioner President. We are now preparing to vote. Okay, you ready now? Okay, they are ready.
Please reconsider. I, I won't take long. Uh, it's some statement that hadn't been talked about yet that we need to talk about.
Well, I mean, I'm sorry, but we've already got the motion. We've already closed the discussions, and we are preparing to vote.
We closed the discussion on the debate for the amendment.
Is it, what's it, what's your discussion about?
Uh, the biggest portion of it is about First Bank owns Benton County Tax Money.
Well, first of all, we don't know that to be a fact, so I don't think that that should be stated.
I got the information from the trustee.
Well, that, there's no one here from First Bank to, to answer to that, so I don't think that should be. But we, you had, you had a chance, Mr. President, to talk when everybody... Well, we're voting.
I think that everybody, Commissioner, you know, I would say.
But the vote is now ready, we're ready to vote, and the discussion was closed when you started to vote. But I will let you make a statement, a short one, just to keep you from thinking that you were un, you were treated unfair. Please make it short.
Some very small numbers that need to be talked about, y'all. Um, property taxes paid for this building over here, 21st Forest Avenue, going to the city for one year was $1,808. Going to the county a year, and this has not changed in past years, $5,688. That's not a lot of money, but I think we should be talking about this. Um, as of August the 12th, the trial balance sheet that's out of the trustee's office shows Benton County having a better than $39 million at the beginning balance. Um, and, uh, $39 million, this includes the school, the highway debt service, and the general fund. $39 million. From the trust of, trustee's office, I have a list of CDs, US Treasuries, local government pool investments. The county has $34,595,000 invested in CDs that I've just talked to you all about. All of these CDs and investments are drawing between 5.15 and 5.75% interest. We've brought in $1.6 million this fiscal year off of investment income. None of us knows how long these good interest rates are gonna last, but we got them right now. Uh, $120,000 spent, and I hear the chairman of budget talking about we're gonna pay it off in two years, uh, $480,000 in just one year is $26,000 of investment income. Moving on, um, I've got a bunch of emails here, and I'm not gonna read them to you. Some of them are Bruce Griffey, some of them was Department of Revenue, some of them Amanda McGraw, uh, other names that I can't mention by memory. It was a few years ago that our excise tax took a big drop. It went from $259,000 to about $59,000. After about a year and a half of being investigated, it was found through the Department of Labor that we had two banks in the county that didn't pay. It was Apex Bank and First Bank. First Bank wrote a check to Benton County for $32,000.
Commissioner, I think this is relevant to the resolution that we're voting on.
All right, I've got one more sentence.
You're relevant.
The point I'm trying to make is First Bank has not paid. We received $191,000 in excise tax for the fiscal year 2023, and not a penny of that was from First Bank. First Bank owes Benton County, on the average, $16,000 a year in excise tax that they have not paid in 2023, and that's being looked into by the Department of Labor, Department of Revenue.
You made a statement that First Bank had not owed us taxes before, and they came up the next month and proved you wrong. They corrected you. So what I'm saying is, what you have stated, it's not fair that the bank does not have a representative here to answer what you're stating. I don't think that was fair. So we're going to move on. Now, okay, we're ready to vote again on the original resolution as we amended it twice. So if you're for the resolution, if you're against it.
Let's say we're voting true.
No, sir. No, we're voting.
Explain the resolution one more time, I'm estimating.
Are you kidding me? You're serious?
Yeah, just read it. Just read it. Never mind.
Are you serious? Do you want it for all of this red? Okay, no, we're not, we're not going to read it again. One of them was your amendment, so you should know what that was. And then you have the other amendment right in front of you.
So what I'd like to...
So now we're going to vote. If you're for this, please vote. If you're against it, you're gonna vote no.
Anyone want to change your vote? Fifteen yes and six no.
Okay, so this resolution has passed. Pending the codes inspection. Okay, we're going to take a ten minute break. Okay, we're going to take a ten minute break.
We have a remodel going on at the Health Department that we had pledged one hundred and twenty-three thousand nine hundred dollars of our ARPA money for as a match. Going into it, we didn't know that the state was using their ARPA money to put in like four hundred thousand of it, and the rest of it is coming from an immunization grant. So it's all state funded except the one twenty-three nine. But in order for us to receive that funding, we have to pay it out first in the bills. And as soon as we get it paid for, they've got a two week return, so every time we get bills, they'll be paid. And then we'll get a return from the state on all of that except the one twenty-three nine. So this is appropriating six hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, Mr. Price, but every bit of that will come back to the county. It's just to pay the bills with, and then we get reimbursed. So the state asked us to do it that way, because they're remodeling all the health departments in Tennessee. Y'all wanna know what all they're doing to this? It's, it's remodeling the whole building inside with the paint, the ceiling tiles, and flooring and all that, putting additional shelving and all. They're, they've got rid of their old shelving, and they're getting a lot better shelving that they can move their rows up and down and everything. But it's also changing the air conditioners and overlayment on the roof. And the immunization fund's building an awning to the right side, so they're building a road to circle the Health Department where they can pull in under an enclosure to do shots and stuff if we ever had a COVID problem again. So this is not spending money, other than you're spending it upfront and then you get back. So all this will be back in this account before the end, before next fiscal year.
Anyone else? I think there are none. Everyone please vote. Anyone would you change your vote? Motion carries, big thing. Resolution twenty-three is resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of two thousand, two hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty cents to a line item for proper expenditure for maintenance agreements. I have a motion by Commissioner Bain and a second by Commissioner Hall. Any questions? There are none, so please vote. Resolution twenty-four is a resolution by Sheriff Ken Christopher to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of five thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six dollars and ninety-nine cents to a line item for the proper expenditure for law enforcement equipment. I have a motion by Commissioner Melton, second by Mr. Price. Any questions for the sheriff? I see none, so everyone please vote. Anyone change your vote? Resolution twenty-five is a resolution by Commissioners Bain, Hall, Preston, Price, and Arnold to approve a five percent cost of living pay increase for employees of the Benton County Sheriff's Department and budget monies to properly fund these raises and associated costs. Resolution twenty-five is a resolution by Commissioners Bain, Hall, Preston, Price, and Arnold to approve a five percent cost of living pay increase for employees of the Benton County Sheriff's Department and budget monies to properly fund these raises and associated costs. We also have two amendments to this resolution. Okay, I need to, do you want to discuss this or you want to hear the amendments first? Mr. Price?
Can we speak after the amendments?
You can speak before we get ready to vote.
I'm just going to take up a couple of minutes of the time here to try to make it quick. Number one, we've worked really hard as a body to come to a good solution and what's fair and equitable for our employees of the Sheriff's Department and our jail. And I really want to thank the Budget Committee for getting us all together, budget and law enforcement. We sat down and had a very productive meeting, not only talked about the immediate need in meeting that for our employees of the Sheriff's Department and the jail. We also were able to sit down and talk about the future of what we can do to make sure that we're able to hire and keep some folks. And make Benton County Sheriff's Department and our county jail an attractive place for those folks to come, come in here and want to go to work, want to move to Benton County. So I'm not going to keep on, but I just wanted to recognize and thank the Budget Committee for the great effort to help us get to, get to a solution and hopefully get these folks what they need. Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Commissioner Preston.
For those of us who are working or who have worked, the key motivation that propels us to leave our homes in the morning to get up out of bed and go to work is the money. Money matters. Mr. Mayor, Director of the School, Director of Highway, General Manager Benton Electric, each of you are expected and required by the taxpayers of this county to provide professional, consistent performance. The same applies for the judges. In most cases, the salaries earned by you reflect the seriousness of the position you serve. Money matters. Tonight I pose a question. If a person armed with a weapon was able to gain interest into one of our schools, a market, a church, who would we expect to respond? We would call our first line of defense Benton County's law enforcement. If a fight breaks out in a public gathering in the presence of children and senior citizens, we would expect our law enforcement to respond swiftly. Who handles the day-to-day dirty work of retaining and caring for those that are sometimes and often lawless, dangerous? Our jailers do. Money matters. Our jailers and our law enforcement do the job that most of us don't want to do. They risk their lives to protect our citizens every day. Yet a cost of living increase for these brave public servants is very difficult to attain here in Benton County. Counties around us have no problem providing law enforcement jailers yearly cost of living increases. Doing so acknowledges the county's appreciation and awareness of the noble, around-the-clock efforts these people have served to protect the counties escalating shootings, radicalizing mentally disturbed individuals possessing weapons and possessing the wheel to harm. We could hang in the balance someday. Are we going to continue to risk losing law enforcement to better paying counties around us just as fact of saving a few tax dollars? What value do we place on the safety of those that elected us to serve them? At these uncertain times, we need the certainty of trained professional law enforcement and willingness to provide adequate pay and cost of living increase. And unwillingness to provide adequate pay and cost of living increases is nothing more than a gamble for the lives of those we're sworn to serve. Let's show our appreciation and respect for these dedicated first-line defenders tonight. Law enforcement, for the most part, a thankless job. Men and women serving these jobs are often treated with ridicule and skepticism. Tonight, let's show them a little thanks. At least some of us, at least some of us, and I'm talking about when we're shopping for groceries, we don't have to look for the best value brand. Yes, the best value brand is about half the price of the popular name brand. But I can guarantee you the certain, I'm certain our law enforcement and jailers, when they shopping and they shopping for groceries, they looking for that best value brand. Pink Floyd, they wrote a song about it, about another brick in the wall, just another brick in the wall. Commissioners, don't be that person. Don't be another brick in the wall. Another song, it's about being numb, comfortably numb. It's not about being high, it's about being numb about what's going on around you. Commissioners, don't be that person. Be better. Thank you, Chairman.
Anyone else?
I pulled some data and between Carroll County and between Peter County, Carroll County eleven thousand, twelve thousand people, Carroll County twenty-eight thousand people. I'll show it to the sheriff over in the morning, you know, who's surprised at what we're looking at here. And we are lower than Carroll County, we are a little bit higher than Carroll County. I'll tell you where we're really low at is on our deputies. I will agree, we are low on our deputy side of this. Wanda, has your office ever gotten a cost of living depraised? It has. You know, they're calling us a cost of living warehouse. Is this something going to continue every year? Is it going to continue every year? And if it does, is it going to consist of the courthouse? Is it going to be five percent or is this a one-time hit? And then if the cost of living comes up next year or the year before, everybody in our, in our government positions will get it. Then someone explained that to me. Is this a one-time hit of this amount or do you expect?
Hey, I'll explain that it's both actually. It's a one-time hit right now.
Right.
But it does change the maintenance effort every time that, so it will be residual every year.
I suppose right.
Yeah.
And that, you know, if we keep giving five percent, we're going to see counties that are bigger than us. And I understand this is a tough job this year that I would, yeah, that's a tough job. We are voting on the deputies, but what I've seen, I've looked at that. I don't know how to vote on something like this. I mean, I'm just, they all hold a very important position. But we steal back to the money, taxpayer dollars, sales tax, things of that nature. You know, I'm likely in front of some kind of another happy medium on something or anything or. I mean, I don't know, I really don't know. So after pulling this data from Carroll County and Carroll County and looking at it, most of the deputies were five thousand dollars less a year on deputies. But investigators were three thousand, three thousand more. On dispatchers, we're averaging about two thousand dollars, about two thousand dollars over on dispatchers. One thousand and stuff like that on dispatchers compared to Carroll County, which is twenty-eight thousand people days. But our deputies, the deputies are on the bank. That's, that's, I don't know what the dispute. I just, like you said, if it comes to maintenance of effort, then that's something that's going to roll on. I mean, can we change the wording of this if we do do this, if this gets voted in? That it's just, I know we've got laws and we've got more and we give more and we give more. And I really, I really don't know how to handle that. We just freaking on this stuff. I just don't know what, how to do it. Inside of me says this is going to happen every five, five, every year, five percent of the maintenance. I don't know. I hate it. But if we can work something out, I mean.
This is a one-time thing. They're not asking for it to be every year. But you will have to come up with what you give them to that every year in the budget because it becomes their budget.
Well, it is that their budget.
Yeah. Their budget will be up that much for next year when we have to pass it. Without another increase, with, you know, not counting them another raise next year, it'll be that much more this next year because of it.
And there's no way of dividing up deputies, dispatchers, investigators, administrators, there's no way of dividing that up. You want five percent directly across your board.
Anyone else?
Chairman.
Commissioner Price was next in line.
One thing real quick, just so everybody knows. Houston County, right over across the river, they just went to twenty-five fifty an hour for a deputy. They have zero industry and they have half, half the population moved in. The city of Jackson, thirty dollars an hour, just did that. That's not, that's not me making up the figure. So please consider that. Thank you.
Councilor.
I think we need to look at it. Jailers and deputies fine, but the rest of the employees over there, we need to see where they stand to the courthouse. They all need to be on the same page. Thank you.
Commissioner Arnold.
Madam Chair. If you don't disturb, we stand up for a counter to and tell you about the business we got in our county. When we talk Carroll County, you have to rely on the police departments in Tennessee, they got the murders, they got the Colorado, they got the city hunt. Well, those deputy have a different response time because they are not controlling inside those city areas. You know, we're, it's sixty-three miles from one end of our county to the other. We're down critically and then, you know, I may disagree with Commissioner Preston, so I know some of them I would have, they have not much great value. Thank you. But I'm telling you that we, if something happens, who you going to call? You going to call, you calling Ghostbusters, you calling that nine one one center. And, you know, when you're talking about not giving the raise to the dispatcher, you know, the dispatcher that are going to dial the phone, trying to keep that person calm, trying to make sure that information is familiar. Trying to talk to that person, tell them how to get CPR, you know, when there's an emergency going on. Trust me, I know that. I had a doctor have a seizure when she was three-year-old and I was holding the phone with the dispatcher. You know, while I was waiting for the ambulances and police officers to get there. We need this, you know, fund these folks. Now, is it going to cost us money to do it? Yes, it's going to cost us money. But some of these shifts are down for, it's just about, like I said last month, it's going to be the sheriff's for Jack. And that's just about where it's getting sometime if they don't have enough to pay them. Hey, it's tough when you competing with TXP and hopping out of ninety-five thousand dollars. Top, you know, competing with the home security, seventy, eighty thousand dollars. When something happens, we want these folks to do that. And unfortunately, you know, you're not going to do no industry. You're not going to get people moving to Benton County if you've got a high crime rate. You know, I get that question all the time, you know, how's your crime rate? They were about like anybody else, you know, but, you know, they do the best they can. Unfortunately, we need to file it someplace, do we have crime rate? Pretty much corporate. Go for a look at the paper. The Sheriff's Department, you know, I was, the last month I kept saying, you know, I said, hey, we need the dispatchers, we need the deputy, we need the other. Well, it does take everybody to run at the Sheriff's Department. And it's up to the sheriff to make up a decision to who gets, you know, on his budget. Obviously, I never do that. But I don't know what the answer to it is. We can keep throwing money at it, you know, to try to get the pay up and try to get people to come and work. We've got to get some people to come and work at our Sheriff's Department. Both, both they're leaving the Sheriff's Department, they want to oversee the county. They're leaving the Sheriff's Department, they want to oversee the parents. They're leaving for the city of Bruton because the pay and the work is still dangerous, still very important. But they don't have to run from the big scene of the holiday, you know, for domestic assault. And sometimes there's only one officer needed to do the mess. And that's not good.
Commissioner Bain?
Yes, I just want to say that you can't cut some of the employees out and give others a raise because it's hard feelings between the workforce over there. They all need the five percent cost of living increase. There's no job going to be valued these days. That's just not even right to even think that. And I agree with not giving the part-time sort of, but the full-time, all of them need to have their cost of living increase, no matter what job they do over there.
Commissioner Preston?
I got this document of the statement of the mayor's office, maybe from Charles Cooper put in my hands. And it's called a statement of expenditures. And it described the amount of money the sheriff and the jail did not spend, got returned to the general fund. That dollar amount of jail and the sheriff's office, five hundred sixty-six thousand four hundred and three dollars. I will say again, the jail and the sheriff, at the end of the year, they had unspent, put back into the general fund, five hundred sixty-six thousand four hundred and three dollars. And I'm going to put this in your hands, Chairman, and have a seat. There's at least one member of the Budget Committee that has a private conversation with me, supports this raise that we're talking about, but you're also afraid of losing their seat on the Budget Committee. I'm going to vote. If you want to address that.
First of all, I have no clue what you're talking about and why anybody would think they would lose their seat on the Budget Committee because of the way they vote. Members of the Budget Committee always vote in different ways, so I don't know why it would matter now. And it won't, it doesn't matter.
Thank you, but you're swaying.
Okay, we're going to vote on, we've got an amendment, I need a. Okay, a motion for the amendment. Amendment number one, which will just be changing. One more question.
Start at three minutes. You know, is there any way, is there any way here where I've heard, I mean drug dogs. How do we, the officers pay them home? How do you pay them? Pay overtime? Yeah, like it's many hours a week overtime.
I think it's a lot. I think it's a lot. A week, so four hours a week.
Save money if you cost three hours. I'm just looking for a way to save a little money, wind up. That's, that's double, double term. Help make up for some money to the jail. Three drug dogs. Drug dogs, other than that, it costs. No, it's all paid for out of there. Man, sure, it's a lot. I don't get that one problem, but I'm just looking for a way to save money, that's all, I apologize. That's it.
Any other questions? I need a motion and a second for the First Amendment, which is to change the language and replace the following down here, this one account number.
Motion.
Commissioner Price, for the First Amendment. I've been told that the audience on Facebook cannot hear because the microphones are not close enough to you when you talk. I was asked to ask if you will talk into your microphone so they can hear better. Okay, this is the First Amendment. Do you have any questions about the First Amendment? It's spelled out for you on the, on the paper. Any questions? Okay, if you're for this First Amendment, please vote.
You want to change your vote? Motion carries big thing.
A motion for the Second Amendment, please. A motion for the second amendment, please. The second amendment is changing the last five account numbers on the bottom of the page.
It's, it's what they added in committee after this was done. It's changing those last four lines to a two-one-ten instead of a one-one-ten. It didn't change the money.
He gives me a swivel, so.
Just changing the numbers.
Yeah. Account numbers.
Yeah, account numbers. Second amendment. Arnold Milton. Okay. Any questions about the second amendment? The only change is the account numbers. Where you see the five-four-one-one-zero, it has been changed to five-four-two-one-zero. That's the only change in those last four line items. So if you're for that amendment, please vote. Or if you're not, please vote. Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carries fifteen yes. Okay, now we are going to vote on this resolution as it has been amended twice. Any questions before we vote?
Froze me, I see.
I blocked you.
Yeah, that's what I thought. We're going to add a hundred. If this goes through, it's on a hundred fourteen thousand, eight hundred thirty-six dollars into the sheriff's budget, right? And it's a maintenance of effort, correct? It'll be there next year again, right?
Yes.
If there is a cost of living, if there is a cost of living, the commission will vote on the cost of living and it will be, will it be for the courthouse, any cost of living, living for the courthouse and jail, everybody employee five, ten, you know?
That would depend on what comes into the budget next year. And you can't say that now.
Oh, yeah, but I'm saying if, if we were to give another cost of living, if they come in and want another five percent cost of living, uh, again, next year, the sheriff does, then if we did that, we'd have to give the ultimate court, everywhere at the courthouse and we'd be voting on it for everybody. But we're going to be up to snuff. We're going to be up to snuff for our own people. That's just it. I mean, if you don't believe me, I've got, I didn't have time to make copies for everybody. But for Carroll County, Haver County, for what we have. I can give food and Paris. But we're going to be up to snuff. We're going to pay a little more in some areas or not. I just, I know Mike Morris said it's going to be a maintenance of effort going. It goes in there, that, that's theirs from now on. It's going to create, it's going to increase the, uh, the overtime, too. But y'all will be happy. Right? But if this next cost of living comes up, I mean, that's the only way I vote for the next time that it does, if I will afford any rules of rule, there's a cost of living. Depends on what, what's going to happen in the world. But anyways, maintenance effort, we'll have a hundred fourteen thousand dollars to the sheriff's budget. Is that right, Mark?
Yes, sir.
What you ask is to be determined later by the budget committee.
Right.
For the next budget. Okay. Any others? We are voting. Okay, if you're for or against, please vote. Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carries fourteen yes, or no. Next on the agenda is the appointing of notaries. We have nine notaries. I'll name those. Brandy Conradz, Sandra Rigel, Heather Drexel, Julianne Cornelius, Rosie Mae Turner, Alicia Owens, Kimberly Wilhelm, Andrea Latham, and Crystal Lynn Nobles. Need a motion, second, to approve the notaries. We have Arnold and Douglas. If you're, will this please vote, yes? Okay. If you're for this, please, vote your vote, please. All by saying aye. Anything want to oppose these notaries? Okay. We're moving on to number thirty-three on the agenda. Is any other business? Uh, we have some added resolutions that we need to suspend the rules for.
I have Karen, I have motions in the room. Twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Uh huh. There's three of them. Twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Okay, we have
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules. Keith made the motion. When we say, um, Commissioner Bane, give the second. Or Marty Douglas, whichever. Okay, resolution twenty-six. It's the resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents to the animal shelter budget. Oh. But
Yeah.
I've got a voice though. I'll sit down. Okay. Yes. Mr. Milton, we need you to vote to suspend the rules if you wish. Okay. Now we're voting on resolution twenty-six. It's the one that I just read. Um, it's to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents to the animal shelter budget in order to carry over the balance in the, into the new fiscal year. Have any questions? I have, I need a motion and a second on this. I have a motion by Commissioner Arnold, a second by Commissioner Bane. Any questions? I think there are none, so please vote. Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carries fifteen yes. Okay, resolution twenty-seven. It's a resolution by Director of Schools, Mark Florence, to budget funds in the amount of eighty thousand dollars received from an equipment grant to the school's budget. I have a motion by Bill Milton and a second by Commissioner Price. Any questions? There are none, so please vote. Anyone want to change their vote? Motion carries fifteen yes. Resolution twenty-eight. It's a resolution by Mayor Mark Ward to appropriate and budget funds in the amount of thirteen thousand seventy-two dollars to various line items to carry forward previously appropriated and budgeted monies to pay for required equipment for the Benton County election office. Motion by Commissioner Fowler and second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions? Okay, you're welcome.
This is just a pass-through money grant also. It didn't get put in budget because he didn't know how much it was going to be when it applied to the grant. Uh, we'll pay this out, but the state will refund us a hundred percent of this. It's just buying some new election equipment through a grant that the state lets not assault.
Any other questions? Please, before the motion, please vote. Does anybody have any other things to say? I have about three things.
I think you Is one of yours, Madam Chairman, an update on the letter to the state election?
No, it wasn't. But the, the letter has been mailed. They were all sent by certified mail return receipt.
Thank you.
The letter. The three things I have, it's just short. I don't know if everybody received your email about our regional meetings that we have every fall. This year, the regional meeting will be in Kenton, Tennessee. It will be at the White Squirrel Winery. It's not much further than where we went last year. Uh, there's two different routes you can take. You can go through Paris and Dresden and Sharon to Kenton. It's sixty-nine miles. You can go from Huntington into Greenfield into Kenton. That's sixty-three miles. Or you can take Highway, Huntington Highway twenty-two into Sharon, six to eight miles. It's not much difference either way you go. I'm sure there's one route better than the other one. But those regional meetings for us, they're scheduled for September the nineteenth. We go and we'll meet with, uh, Mr. Curtis and Mike, um, Gailey and a few other representatives there. And we'll talk and we'll have a meal. Now, um, we had a good turnout last year when we went. I hope we have another good turnout.
And Mr. Curtis, that's where I get counted. Didn't want, uh, for the meal.
When does he need to know? Do you know? Okay. Does anybody now plan to go? Okay. If you plan, change your mind, you want to go, just let me know so I can send him a headcount. Now, uh, another announcement is, like I mentioned earlier, about people coming to our town. Congressman Mark Green will be here tomorrow. He's going to be out at the Benton County Chamber office for a roundtable discussion at three P.M. If you'd like to go and meet with him and talk and see what he's got to tell us or what we might want to tell him. That's tomorrow at three at the chamber. And the next announcement is Ms. Jennifer Wheatley and the industrial board will be feeding us again in October. So she said for us to, uh, arrive at five o'clock. We'll have a meal and they will talk to us and then we'll come right over here for our meeting, just like we always have before. I think that's very nice and we thank you in advance for the meal that you're going to feed us at five o'clock. That's all I've got to say. That's October that they're feeding us. Okay.
Uh, there's something else going on for, uh, I'll let Charlie announce this, but he sent you all, all an email about it.
Yeah, I just wanted to let you know in case you didn't see the email, the double check, uh, I got a call the other day from HUD. They're rewarding Good Samaritan Village with a pretty substantial grant. It was three point five million dollars. It's on my notes up here. We're going to present an oversized check and, you know, go to office and give everybody a chance to say a few words and thanks from the residents there. And just to see what I said, I invite commissioners to be able to know. Everybody else in the official team, because we're commissioners. Make sure, make sure you all know about it. It's eleven o'clock, eleven o'clock on Friday, this Friday. Get some better clothes and let y'all get to come out. Say a few words or just be here through the sound.
Any, anyone else want to say? Commissioner, I mean, I'm Sheriff, Christopher.
I want to make a quick, Commissioner, I want you to know I appreciate it. I love you to go on this raise. It will help me build positions with balcony. For, for cars, they have couples that happen in town now. And it'll also help me to retain the price of my free pay. And I would lay out a share of all this with the like.
Sheriff, you going to tell us who you need chief deputies are, so I?
Yes. I bet y'all never seen the exiled here before. And, uh, just one out, this is not Gotti Holliday. Jim Arnold and Lynn Clark are my two chief deputy, uh, in action to the law. And, uh, I just, I think it's going to be a great job. I'm going to step up and help these movements out of the corner. I really appreciate having them. We're going to bring this target, got to move it up. The positions we had, sometimes it's more than just getting more jobs. Thank y'all for the late tonight, uh, for the game.
Anyone else before we adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, I need a second?
Yes.
Second? Okay. We are, we're leading as adjourn.